Hello, I'm Edward Halpern and welcome to our February 2021 New York Medical College Town Hall meeting. We have a large number of speakers poised today to address what we believe are the main issues of interest to our campus community. But I wish to begin by talking with you about three things on my mind. First, this is of course our first Town Hall meeting of the new calendar year. I doubt that any of us will look back upon 2020 with great fondness. In addition, the events of November 2020 through January 2021 have shaken many of us. A contested general election, the runoff elections in Georgia, mob violence and insurrection at our nation's Capitol, which endangered the life and safety of the Vice President, the Speaker of the House, and multiple members of Congress, in which the mob murdered a Capitol Police Officer using a fire extinguisher as a weapon and caused the death of two more officers in what appears to be post-traumatic stress suicides. It is a national tragedy. It is a stain on our democracy. America continues to struggle with institutional racism, poverty and health disparities. We can take solace that on January 20, a new transition of power occurred with a new federal executive and legislative branches, and we can both pray for national healing and commit ourselves to that hard work. A second, I want to frankly address what I suspect is high on your list of concerns. When will we be able to offer vaccines on our campus? As of the time I am recording this message for broadcast at the Town Hall, our more than two-month-old request to the state for a supply of vaccines have not resulted in any shipment of vaccines to us. While a great many people have put a lot of work in to create the necessary infrastructure for vaccine administration, we cannot inject anyone with a product when we have not received any. At present, if you are eligible in accordance with the state guidelines, the best we can say is the truth. Apply for an appointment at a pharmacy, health department, or hospital or clinic administration site in accordance with your group. If or when we at NYMC receive a supply of vaccine, we will notify the campus. Meanwhile, as I wrote to you on Friday, our most recent campus-wide saliva screening for COVID-19 showed zero positive tests out of 252 people. As the old medical adage goes, if what you're doing is working, keep doing it. Keep wearing those masks, washing those hands, and staying socially distant. Finally, I want to thank all of you for how hard you've been working to be responsible stewards of our beloved college in this trying time. I recognize that you're trying to work while being fearful for your safety and the safety of your loved ones. For many of you, you are juggling childcare, care for aging parents, figuring out how to get groceries without endangering yourself and others, and now snowstorms. We appreciate your work. We hope that the 1% one-time pay increment in the December paycheck was a tangible way of saying so. For the students listening in today, I recognize that this is not the educational experience you signed up for, but I am sure this college cannot single-handedly halt a worldwide pandemic. And I assure you that people of goodwill are working as hard as humanly possible to provide you with a quality education under the circumstances in which we find ourselves. I attended a funeral online on Tuesday, and the next day I learned of the death of a longtime fellow department chair at Duke Medical School, where I was a department chair. Between the pandemic and the deaths of friends, I, like many of you, must feel what is the civilian equivalent of battle fatigue. But we just read in the Book of Exodus how Aaron told his brother Moses to stand in a prominent place and hold up his arms so the children of Israel would take heart while crossing the Red Sea ahead of Pharaoh's chariots. As leaders in health science research, education and clinical care, you must all stand direct in prominent places and hold up our arms to show resilience. And to do so will show yet again that great things are happening at New York Medical College. Thank you for listening, and let's now hear from our colleagues about the college.
Hi, I'm Dr. Robert Amler, back again. How safe is our campus with respect to COVID? We know people stay home if they feel sick or test positive. So the real question is how much asymptomatic COVID is going around campus that puts us at risk of catching the virus, even from someone who doesn't know they're sick? Well, starting last September, as many of you know, New York Medical College has been randomly screening COVID on campus roughly once a month. We randomly select people who spend time on campus and test their saliva. It's a quick, easy and painless method, and we get results the next day, sometimes even sooner. The randomization begins with a line list of names of everyone who has swiped entry into a campus building during a two-to-four-week period. We eliminate the duplicate names and the non-eligibles, like visitors who only came here once or twice. We draw a statistical probability sample of about 300 names and send out notices that they were selected and ask them to make appointments on the next testing day. Getting tested is considered mandatory if you're selected, but some exemptions are granted for a few people who can't be on campus on that particular day for a legitimate reason. The final group of 200-plus gets tested. We collect a small amount of saliva in a small container tipped with a short drinking straw. It looks a bit odd, but it's quick, easy and painless. We send the specimens to a contract lab and use the aggregate result to estimate the percent of asymptomatic COVID on campus. So far, every test event, including the one last week, has estimated we have either no COVID, asymptomatic, or less COVID than the surrounding area. If you are selected next time or anytime, please remember three things. First, it is considered mandatory, so please come if you're asked. Second, please show up on time for your appointment because that helps us avoid long lines and delays. Third, remember we do need fresh, clean saliva without extra ingredients. So no mouthwash for two hours before the test, and for 30 minutes before the test, no gum chewing, no candy, no food, no tooth brushing, no smoking, and no drinking, including water, and that again is for 30 minutes before the test. Again, we are doing this about once a month to monitor how much COVID is going around campus undetected. And with your help, this can be done smoothly and effectively. So thank you in advance for the next COVID testing day.
Hello, my name is Dr. Edward Farkas. I'm the Vice Dean of the Turo College of Dental Medicine. I have been asked to speak as to how the virtual interview process has affected the admissions cycle this year. Before I do that, I'd like to give a little bit of a recap on the admission cycle as a whole. Total applications this year are at 2,635, which are up 50 applications from last cycle. We have gone up every year since our first year, so this is an expected result. We have done three in-person interview days totaling 108 applicants that before we went strictly remote. We have interviewed 487 people to date. All indications are that the virtual interviews have not hindered us as we have more deposited applicants at this time of the cycle than we did last year. The video tour of the school and the student ambassadors that are part of the initial welcome have been vital to our process, and the overall public perception on the school has yielded a great result in applications and quality of applicants. Going virtual allows us the opportunity to interview across the country more widely since applicants do not have to spend the money to come visit and saves the school money as well. We also have had more interviewers as it is easier on their schedule to interview from their remote locations. We will give the opportunity to allow accepted applicants to visit in the spring in small groups, and we will have a robust Town Hall prior to their virtual in-person orientation. In our opinion, as we have seen with the hybrid learning of virtual lecture rooms and small in-person instruction, the virtual interview day makes sense financially for both the school and the applicant in what is a high-priced process to begin with. And therefore, we think that post-COVID, the virtual interview process will continue. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Karen Murray, Associate Dean of Admissions for the School of Medicine. I've been asked to give an overview of the 2020-2021 virtual admissions cycle. As with everyone else, we were faced with the challenge of the pandemic of 2020, and what were we going to do for the admissions cycle? We ended the last cycle with our last few interview days being virtual, and then we had to think about what we were going to do for the upcoming cycle. We thought about virtual, fully virtual. We talked about, we thought about a hybrid model, and then realized it was probably best to plan for a fully virtual model and work going forward. This particular cycle, we had about 15,000 applications, which is an increase of about 26% from last cycle. Our virtual MMI day for us was a new day, and we were set with, we were asked and challenged with how to formulate or how to put together this virtual MMI day. So what we decided to do is to keep our interview day the same. We start with an orientation, followed by a student panel and interviews in the afternoon. One thing's different is we do ask the applicants to review some videos that we would normally show during admissions day prior to coming in for their interview day. During the orientation, we do exactly the same orientation we would do if they were there in person. The student panels would have had a lunch session with the students. They continue to have a lunch session, but this time it's on a Zoom platform. So the orientation and the student panels are done via Zoom. The interviews start around 1:00 every afternoon and go from about 1:00 to 4:00. And the interview portal that we're using is a virtual portal from Prospect HR. This is just an idea of what the portal looks like. We have an area where we have a countdown for the scenario as well as for the interview. What's nice about this portal is we continue to keep the scenario on the screen. The applicant can see themselves in the small box, and the interviewer will be in the larger box. The portal is completely manned by admissions staff behind the scene. We also have admissions staff doing troubleshooting between the applicants themselves as well as the interviewers. Now, you know, many things can happen, from electricity outage to internet failures. And so the ability to be able to communicate with the applicants and the interviewers is integral to making this work. However, what's nice about this is that in the last two days when we were hit with the snowstorm, you know, we were still able to interview on Monday and Tuesday. On days of old, we would have been scrambling to find, you know, makeup days for the two days that would have had to be canceled. So that's one of the plus sites to have in this virtual MMI portal. The portal is also very user-friendly. So what's, so the applicant signs in, the interviewer signs in, and then they really have nothing to do. They just kind of sit and speak to each other. The portal will move between applicants and move between interviewers, and when the session's over, the portal will let them know, your session is over, your interview day has ended. So it's really nice in that it's very user-friendly. One challenge that we had to do initially was how did we train our interviewers on using this new portal? So towards the fall and end of the summer, early fall, we had multiple training sessions with our interviewers as well as mock MMI sessions so they could become familiar with the portal. We continue to have daily briefing sessions with our MMI interviewers, and we're able to give them any updates we have with the portal. And this is important because just this past month, the portal was updated over the holidays, and so we had a few things that were different and some changes that we needed to communicate to our interviewers. Daily, when we have our orientation sessions with the applicants, we also give them an overview of the portal, and we also troubleshoot with them, you know, what are the different things that we'll encounter while they're having their interview session that day? So we try to have everyone up to date, up to speed, so that we can have a smooth day with the MMIs. Here's some, on the right, you'll see some key admission dates that were, that are AMCAST-driven as well as the other important dates in the cycle, which is for us, February 19th, which is when AMCAST allows the applicant to select, plan to enroll. April 30th, which is when AMCAST allows the applicants to select, commit to enroll. And July 5th, which is our very last day that the applicant can commit to enroll to New York Medical College. So far, we have interviewed approximately 1,000, we've invited approximately 1,000 applicants for interviews, and we have already interviewed about 549. We have about 14 more interview days left in the cycle, and we'll continue to interview until the end of March. Our admissions committee meets by Zoom twice a month, and they started meeting at the end of September and will continue to meet through to the beginning of April. This is the comparison demographics over the last three years and over the last two years, sorry, and then also this current cycle so far. And as you can see, we're pretty much about the same as we were last year in terms of our demographics for the class. Our second look day, which is planned for the first or second week in April, we did virtually last year for the first time. And I think this year, you know, we probably will still have to plan for a virtual second look day. We'll see how that goes, and hopefully it will be just as smooth as it went last year. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Dr. Ronnie Myers, Dean of the Turo College Dental Medicine, and I'm here today to speak to you briefly about the postdoctoral residency dental match program. It is a unique program in that it differs significantly from medical school matches. In fact, the reason it is unique is that you do not have to do a residency program upon graduating from dental school. You graduate from dental school practice-ready. And it is not a requirement for licensure in any state but New York. So in 49 of the 50 states, you can graduate from dental school and get a license, successfully completing a clinical licensure exam. Currently, there are about 6,200 dental graduates in the United States. In the match program, there were 3,915 individuals participating. Those also include people from pre-2021 graduates. The number of positions that are offered in the match program, and this includes specialty programs as well as general practice or general dentistry programs, is 2,485. But of those, only 2,295 positions were filled. So therefore, there was a rate of 59% matching. And if one looks at the graph on the screen, one can see the red line, which is the applicants participating, versus the yellow line in matched positions, and one sees quite a bit of spread accounting for that 59% match. TCDM results were quite, quite good. We actually had 89 of our 109 graduates, potential graduates, beginning the process. Of those, 74 actually entered the match program. 15 of them withdrew before submitting a rank order list, or they, and the reason they withdrew is they may have matched in a non-match program or they decided to go into practice in a state that they could. So of the 74 that entered the match, 55 did so, meaning that we matched at a rate of 74%, which is obviously significantly higher than the national 59%. There is significant difficulty in matching by specialty. In fact, specialties actually match pre-2020 on graduates at a greater rate when one looks at it versus regular graduates in the class of 2021. In fact, 40% of the people who match in oral surgery programs did so graduating pre-2021. 43% in pediatrics and 33% in orthodontics. When one looks at the general practice matching rate though, it is significantly flipped in that the 2021 graduates, 97% of the people who match general practice programs are 2021 graduates. So only 3% are pre-2021. We had two people match from the class of 2021 in pediatrics. We had four people match in AEGD and 49 people in general practice residency programs. Geographically, they matched all over the country. Predominantly matched in New York State, but we did have New Jersey and Connecticut, Virginia, California, Ohio, Colorado, and Oregon. Post-match, those individuals who did not match, we worked on those who interested in continuing in search of programs. We've currently matched 10, and we're working on others who continue to desire programs. Of our 2020 class, they matched two in oral surgery and two in pediatrics. Interestingly enough, the two in oral surgery did fellowships, one at the University of California, San Francisco, and one was at Rutgers in New Jersey, and both of those individuals now have matched into programs, the one in California and one actually in Nassau County. So I appreciate the time, and thank you very much for listening about the postdoctoral residency dental match program.
Hello, I'm Dr. Jerry Nadler, Dean of the School of Medicine and Professor of Medicine and Pharmacology. I wish you all well during these challenging times, and we all hope and pray that we'll see an end to this pandemic during this 2021. Now, what I'm going to talk about now are the importance of department chairs and our outstanding recruits that are on the way. Now, department chairs are the backbone of our medical school and also provide leadership in our School of Basic Medical Science as well as our clinical affiliates. Last year, we recruited outstanding chairs, and our efforts focused this year on recruiting a chair for the newly-integrated Department of Pathology, Microbiology, Immunology, Chair and Director of Neurology, and Chair and Director of Radiation Medicine. I'm excited to announce that Dr. Humayun Islam is our new Chair of Pathology, Immunology and Microbiology. I also want to thank Dr. Raj Tawari for his excellent leadership during his time as interim Chair of Microbiology and Immunology. Now, for that department, we are also actively performing a national search for a Vice Chair of Research. Search Committee is now being formed for that important search for our college. Now, for neurology and radiation medicine searches, our committees have done an outstanding job, and finalists have been identified and are now being invited to campus for on-campus interviews. I'm very excited about the candidates, and I want to thank Dr. Kelly Hutchison, who chaired the search committee for neurology, and also Dr. Renee Garrick, who chaired the search for our radiation medicine search. I'm very excited that we're going to have outstanding chairs for these next two positions, and I'm looking forward to partnering with all of you as we recruit these outstanding candidates. Thank you very much.
Hello, I am Thomas Modera, Chief Human Resources Officer for the Turo College and University System. It is my great pleasure to announce Ron Mattern as NYMC's recently hired Associate Vice President for Facilities Management and Capital Planning. Ron's first day was January 19th, and he is located on the Valhalla campus. Ron reports directly to Dr. Halpern and to Jeff Rosengarten, SVP Operations for TCUS, on a dotted line basis. The search was conducted jointly by New York Medical College and Turo College. Human Resources led the sourcing and initial candidate screening, and leadership at NYMC and Turo participated in many rounds of detailed interviews. From a pool of 100 applicants, the candidates were narrowed down to a potential final three, with Ron emerging as the most highly qualified. His experience will benefit NYMC greatly. Prior to joining NYMC, Ron was Executive Director of Facilities Management and Planning with the City University of New York, supporting four campus locations. His experience also includes leadership positions with Greenwich Public Schools, the Ramaz School, Mercy College, and Columbia University. In addition to his work experience and many accomplishments, Ron has a bachelor's degree in Business Administration, Finance, a master's in Public Administration, and is a candidate for a Master of Science in Business Analytics. Ron has a very data-driven approach, but is also very collegial to work with, focused on meeting his clients' needs. Please join me in welcoming Ron to the team at New York Medical College as he brings what I'm sure will be great value in support of our faculty, staff, and students. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nicholas Janega, Vice President and Chief Legal Counsel for New York Medical College. I lead the Office of General Counsel, which includes oversight of our campus security department. Late last year, Mr. William Allison, the college's longtime Director of Campus Security for the past 15 years, announced his plan to retire. The college commenced a search for a new security director and received more than 90 applications for the position. I'm pleased that so many members of the public are interested in joining our vibrant campus community and helping to lead this important campus department into the future. I've identified several strong candidates with valuable public safety and community service experience. Leading candidates are proceeding through the interview process, which involves including stakeholders from many campus constituencies, staff, and students. I look forward to announcing a hiring decision in the weeks to come. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Marina Hols, and I am the Dean of the Graduate School of Basic Medical Sciences and Professor of Cell Biology and Anatomy. First of all, I want to wish you all a happy belated New Year. I wish all of you health, happiness, and love in 2021. And those of you who are affected by the pandemic, you are in my thoughts. One of the things that became apparent during the past year is the importance of basic science for public health, being able to provide solutions to the emerging health threats and be ready for the challenges that have yet become apparent. Last year was very difficult for all of us. However, our basic scientists were in an exceptionally precarious position. As you know, basic science depends on hands-on lab research and generating original data, which became impossible when we shuttered the college and the research labs during the beginning of the pandemic. However, around Memorial Day, we started gradually reopening the labs, keeping an eye on safety. Most labs are now operational, most at reduced density for safety reasons. As we look towards the future, we recognize the need to strengthen our research capacity. A robust and vibrant faculty body in the basic sciences is the cornerstone of the research and educational missions of New York Medical College. For that reason, with the support of the senior leadership of the college, we will soon begin a search for a cluster hire of three basic scientists at the assistant professor level. The addition of talented faculty members whose research spans interdisciplinary boundaries will reinvigorate research programs in the basic sciences and the college. And we expect that we will gain dedicated faculty who will advise masters and PhD students and postdoctoral fellows and will contribute to the educational mission of the college. I also want to stress the importance of these recruits to advance modern education in basic and translational medicine for medical students and to provide new opportunities to partner with our outstanding clinicians at our academic affiliates. Moreover, the infusion of ideas and enthusiasm will allow for new collaborations and team science projects in areas of research excellence within NYMC. Dean Nadler and I are both active scientists, and we are very excited about this search. We are looking forward to working with our colleagues in the basic sciences to make it a success. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dr. Jerry Nadler, Dean of the School of Medicine, also Professor of Medicine and Pharmacology. I also want to thank and acknowledge our outstanding faculty who have continued to provide training to our students and wonderful education during these challenging times to help them become excellent physicians in the future. Now, it's very important that we partner with Dean Hols in providing these three faculty recruits to provide MD program, all the appropriately trained diverse faculty to deliver the curriculum, modern curriculum for our medical students. It's also very important for our medical students to enter any residency program and subsequent contemporary practice, whether it's in the community setting or academic setting. In addition, another important aspect that these faculty can provide will be basic or translational team science research, which is extremely important in helping our medical students reach their career goals and become excellent physicians. The next steps in recruiting these three faculty will be posting the positions and then hiring a appropriate search committee to really help us meet these goals. Thank you very much.
This is Nicholas Janega again, Vice President and Chief Legal Counsel. I was also asked to speak on the topic of campus facilities, specifically the status of the Munger Pavilion. Munger is named after Dr. Claude Munger, Director of the DeGrasse Lans Hospital, the predecessor to Westchester Medical Center from nineteen twenty-four to nineteen thirty-seven. Munger Pavilion served as the adult tuberculosis hospital building back at that time. When New York Medical College moved to the Valhalla Campus in the late seventies and early eighties, the Munger Building initially housed offices, including active patient-facing practices of our faculty members. Due to the building's age, over time, the conditions became unsafe for students, staff and members of the public to continue to use. Following the college's acquisition of Skyline Drive, in two thousand thirteen, all occupants were moved out of Munger and the building was closed and turned into the status that you see it today. Munger, like certain other buildings on our campus, is leased from Westchester County. New York Medical College has been working through multiple county administrations to extend the lease term and obtain authorization to demolish the current Munger Building and construct a new facility, ready to support the future needs of our college. We anticipate the new building will provide modern student housing as well as additional office and academic support space for the college. Today, we're in the advanced stages of negotiation of the new land lease with the county. The new lease will permit the college to revitalize the entire northeast corner of our campus. Once the lease is completed and approved by the county, the college will undertake a design process for the new building. We'll obtain the necessary regulatory approvals, line up project financing, demolish the current building and finally construct the new modern facility. While our current students won't walk the halls of the new building, this long-term improvement project for the campus will take shape in the years to come and will positively impact the college campus community across many future decades. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Vilma Bordinaro, Chief of Staff at New York Medical College. I would like to provide you with an update on food services. All vending machines are currently up and running and fully stocked. Our Starbucks is currently open five days a week, providing grab-and-go items such as sandwiches, salads, yogurt, et cetera. These all could be purchased in addition to grocery items. We recently added limited seating for those who wish to eat or study. Please be advised, the Doc's Cafe will remain closed until we can safely reopen. Until then, if you have any questions or concerns, you can please email me at vilma underscore bordinaro at NYMC dot E D U. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Nicholas Webb, and I am the College Archivist, Creator of Historical Collections in the Health Sciences Library here at New York Medical College. On behalf of the library, I would like to invite you all to participate in our upcoming book club discussion of Dr. Damon Tweedy's Black Man in a White Coat. We will soon be sending out a promotion for this event. Today, as the college archivist, I'm very proud to share the recent research in the archives deepening our knowledge of New York Medical College's history as a bastion against bigotry in health sciences education. In the late nineteenth and early twentieth centuries, when most New York City medical schools did not admit black students, New York Medical College did, and many of our graduates played prominent roles both as physicians and as community activists and civil rights leaders. I will now turn the camera over to Dr. Milletian, who will go over the college's plans to celebrate Black History Month.
Thank you, Nick, for the great work you have done with your deep dive into the history of New York Medical College. Your work has served to reaffirm the forward thinking of NYMC founders. We are now in Black History Month, and at this time, I will go over some of the NYMC plans for the month. Please note that this is not all-inclusive. The Office of Diversity and Inclusion here at New York Medical College has teamed up with the Student National Medical Association and the Gold Humanism Honor Society to sponsor a viewing of the documentary film, Black Men in White Coats, produced by Dr. Dale Oparo-Dudu. This event will take place on Monday, February fifteenth at six P M. and will be on Zoom. After the viewing, we will host a campus-wide discussion reflecting on various elements of the film. The advertisement for the event is forthcoming. On February seventeenth, NYMC will have a Black History Month celebration. The event will be on Zoom starting at seven thirty P M. The keynote speaker for the event will be Dr. Adele Alexander, who is the niece of two NYMC alumni, alumni who attended NYMC at the turn of the century. At this event, we will have a virtual unveiling of several historic posters honoring turn-of-the-century NYMC black alumni. These posters were researched and prepared by our archivist, Mr. Nicholas Webb, whom you have just heard from. Former New York Governor David Patterson will also be a guest speaker at the event. Additionally, Mr. Christopher Roker, the CEO of New York City Health and Hospitals Metropolitan, will also be providing remarks. You will soon be receiving invitations and an opportunity to RSVP to this event. In addition, keep a lookout for weekly newsletters that the Student National Medical Association will be sending out throughout the month. These newsletters will be highlighting black NYMC alumni as well as other historical figures. Finally, I'd like to mention that we now have an Assistant Director for the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, who started on February first, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Zuleka Cuevas is officially the Assistant to the Vice Chancellor for Diversity and Inclusion here at NYMC. She has already started meeting with numerous stakeholders on campus, and we are gradually making our way to meet with representatives of all the schools on campus. We look forward to working with you all. Enjoy the remainder of the month, and I look forward to seeing you at some of these events. Thank you for your attention.
Good afternoon. My name is Salman Ammar. I'm the Vice President for Biomedical Research at New York Medical College, and I'm here to provide an update on the renovation project that we have for the basic science building. And New York Medical College is currently engaged in renovation of approximately twelve thousand square feet of laboratory space within the basic science building. This project started about eighteen months ago, and it consisted of surveying laboratories requiring minor versus moderate or major renovation. So this effort has four facets. First one is the creation of departmental shared lab resource space, one per department. This space involved the creation of shared fume hood clusters available to everybody, significant energy-efficient measure. But we also serve to co-locate important shared resources and certain multi-user specialty space such as tissue culture. Second facet is the creation of satellite vivarium space outside of the main vivarium area, allowing for the relocation of the behavioral phenotyping core located in the main vivarium area. The third facet is the creation of satellite shared laboratory space for bioink at New York Medical College clients, especially those clients that have intensive needs geared towards the utilization of course and in the basic science building such as the vivarium, imaging, mass spectrometry, et cetera. The fourth facet is the renovation of biomedical laboratory space that is currently vacant or occupied by unfunded faculty members to retain investigators with significant external funding and to attract promising early-stage investigator as well as seasoned investigator with funded investigators. Multiple meetings between the team and the various deans, as well as the various department chairs and investigators that are implicated in this renovation process have taken place to fully vet the process and especially to request feedback. We have received partial feedback so far, and we continue to incorporate feedback in the final drawing. Currently, we are finalizing the need associated with the analysis and the programming phase and moving onto the design development of pre-construction supports such as site survey, code investigations and scenario-based budget development. So the construction phase is presumed to be in three phases. The first phase will consist of a high-priority build-out need, including investigator retention-related lab renovation and the bioink expansion. The second phase will include medium-priority item, shared resource core, satellite vivarium area and immediate recruiting need space. And finally, the third phase, which is basically a build-out, built-to-suit, in a sense, lab areas for mid-year recruit. This will allow us to pivot, if necessary, due to any forcing building condition as well as financial impacts of code requirement by the A H J as part of the permitting process. We therefore anticipate the start of the construction on Phase One in late April. Subsequent phases will be added to the permit when design development is finalized, and any budget conflict will be resolved. While I'm cognizant that this process has caused some disruption to some of us, let me assure you that once finished, you will all be proud of the upcoming state-of-the-art BSB biomedical lab space that will allow to better nurture research programs of existing investigator and being able to attract nuance. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Hi, I'm Dr. Barrett Feldman. I'm a psychologist and co-director at Student Mental Health and Wellness Services. I wanted to take some time to give you some information about what's been going on for our services throughout the pandemic. In March, we went off-campus, but we continue to offer all of our services via Zoom. So if you're unaware of our services, I again am a psychologist. We have Dr. Stern, who's our psychiatrist. We also have Robin Herskowitz, who's our licensed clinical social worker, and Kelsey Polkop, who is our administrative assistant. Through Student Mental Health and Wellness Services, we offer short-term psychotherapy, medication management. We also offer an anonymous way for students to get in contact with us. We understand that it's a terribly difficult time that we're all going through right now, and at times, we don't want to make ourselves known, but we still want to be able to be provided with support. Going through the ISP, which is an email that all of you should have gotten by now, but there is a link to the ISP on our website. You can fill out a questionnaire and it is sent to our mailbox, and one of us will contact you. We can correspond anonymously through that ISP contact, or you can make yourself known at whatever point you feel comfortable. We have also continued to offer workshops dealing with sleep anxiety, some workshops and small groups in how to cope with some of the racial disparities that we're going through, the COVID nineteen pandemic, and so on and so forth. We hope you will take the time to contact us. There is no problem, too big or small. We are here to help. In addition to psychotherapy and the workshops that we've offered, we continue to offer wellness services. So prior to the start of the pandemic, we offered yoga, meditation and Pilates in person. We're now offering yoga and meditation via Zoom. It is again a free service that's offered twice a week for students. It's also a service that is recorded. So if at any point you find you're unable to make the classes, just log on to our website, and it will be there for you to view and participate in whenever you can. I'll now turn the camera over to Dr. Stern, who will talk a little bit more about what we are offering.
Thank you, Dr. Barrett Feldman. I wanted to speak a little bit about something that we all know but don't pay close enough attention to. By now, we're all accustomed to the new normal of living in a pandemic. And while we all hope the vaccine and improved coordination will have us returning to the time of fans at sporting events and barbecues with friends and family, I wanted to take this moment to illustrate some of the things that may persist and impact us all negatively if we aren't aware. For example, a study shows that Americans on average now work more than ten hours per day versus only seven hours pre-pandemic. This is true for much of the world as well. These three hours can crush any semblance of work or school life balance. We know anecdotally how many folks are balancing childcare with work or school or are expected to answer emails or texts late at night or on weekends from colleagues or family. For healthcare providers, whatever time might be left over for self-care can be used to crash out on the couch after wearing an N ninety-five mask all day and feeling exhausted. For all these reasons, I'd like to exhort you all to focus on yourselves. Say yes to help others, of course, but know your limits as well. I hear how difficult things are for you, and I support you, but also I have to study and focus on my goals. That's something that you can say. Keep caring for yourselves and striving to do things that make you happy, even as burnout and limited free time conspire to take from you. Thank you.
I want to thank all of our speakers. Now it's time for your questions. If you wish to ask a question, please go to the question and answer function on your computer and type them in, and I will monitor them and then hand them out to our various panelists, whoever is most appropriate to answer your question. We have had several questions come in already, both before and during the program. And the first will go to Dr. Marissa Montcalvo. We have had a variety of questions about when will the college get a supply of vaccines? Will I be able to get vaccinated at New York Medical College? If I can't get vaccinated at New York Medical College, where should I go? So let's start with Dr. Montcalvo to try to answer those questions. Dr. Montcalvo?
Thank you. So vaccine obviously is not sufficient. We are, as Dr. Halperin said at the beginning, we are ready to do points of distribution of vaccination. We will be doing it at Skyline, and we're all set up. We're ready to do it, whatever hours are necessary, whatever days are necessary, but we have to receive vaccine, and we don't have vaccine. Until we receive vaccine, I would suggest that you go to the New York State Department of Health and always go into, am I eligible? To look for where there could be vaccine available for you. However, I just want to summarize for a minute the situation. So we are at the end of Week Nine of vaccine distribution, this weekend, Sunday, February fourteenth. Vaccine is distributed by the State Department of Health on a phased distribution to groups as well as directed by the state as to who can vaccinate those groups. So the first four weeks were Phase One A, which was nursing homes and hospitals. And over the course of that four weeks, hospitals were allowed to vaccinate healthcare providers who were not their direct employees, but who were involved in patient-facing activities as students here at the School of Medicine and at other schools are. Beginning with, and that was all done through the hospital points of distribution. Beginning with January eleventh, we entered Phase One B, which expanded to first responders, corrections, childcare, includes in-person faculty and instructors, public transit, and persons sixty-five years of age and older. But again, who can vaccinate them is determined by the state. So the local health department does a lot of those groups. But they are just here in Westchester because again of insufficient vaccine. We're just at the point of, you know, police officers and some school and some K through twelve schools and firefighters. So there are many in those groups that So there are many in those groups that haven't been gotten to yet. And 65 and older is under the pharmacies. Beginning Monday, there will be a new group opened up, which is persons 16 years of age and older for Pfizer, 18 years of age and older for Moderna, who have conditions that put them at risk for severe COVID. That list of conditions is on the governor's website. Just go to governor.nyork and go to vaccine, and you can see that very easily. And who will be responsible for vaccinating these populations? And the vaccine that they will receive, again, is pending, but will be out very soon. So we are working constantly to try to get vaccine. The hub here at Westchester Medical Center is trying to help us. Some people on this call, you may actually hear from them. We've given out lists of students who are in patient-facing activities, who we know still need vaccine. But again, it's all about the supply. In the interim, I just want to say a couple of things. That good news is that I think J&amp;J will be going for emergency use authorization before the end of the month. So that should help in terms of supply. And, you know, just to thank everyone for their patience. It's just so important to be patient during this period of time. And I think as a health science university, we should also help people to understand the incredible accomplishment that during this pandemic, we went from isolation of the release of the genetic code of the virus on January 11 to EUA of the first vaccine on December 8, which is under 11 months. And that's an incredible scientific accomplishment and something that's really incredible to be a witness to. So I just wanted to close with that remark.
Dr. Bart Feldman and Dr. Stern, our questioner says, "Do you have any suggestions for what, for lack of a better term, I'm going to call vaccine worry? I'm spending a lot of time worrying about getting an appointment, checking websites for appointments, and making phone calls. It's all starting to wear on me and eating up time. Are these abnormal feelings? Do you have any suggestions for how to manage this emotion? Perhaps we'll take it in alphabetical order. Dr. Bart Feldman, first, and Dr. Stern?
Sure. Your concern is definitely valid. I think that we've been living and working with increased degrees of uncertainty for a long time now, and we've been waiting for this vaccine. I think that is understandable to feel how you're feeling. What I can suggest that you do is stay up to date with the information that is provided about which phases we're in in terms of vaccine administration. Also, look towards information that you trust to help to guide you to when your potential timeline or your phase for the vaccination comes about. But it's also okay to take a break, take some time off. If you've made your calls and you've searched the internet and tried to get appointments, it may just not be your time. Lastly, maybe just engage in activities that are pleasurable for you. I think we need to be intentional with our actions right now because we live in such uncertain times. So do take some time away from the television, some time away from all the websites, looking into the vaccines, and do things that are fun.
Thank you, Dr. Stern.
Yes, I mean, I think Dr. Barrett Feldman covered a lot of good information. I would simply underline or add, there's two things that you can do. I think one is you can actively curate your social media feed, like Dr. Barrett Feldman said, but, you know, to eliminate a lot of the noise. And the second thing to do is, you know, like with any anxiety, tell yourself, okay, I'm going to check, you know, once or twice a day, and that's it. And feel like that's okay. Nothing's going to change so greatly once a day, and then the rest of the day, you can go about your business and try to enjoy your life. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Thank you, Dr. Barrett Feldman. For all those of you listening in, if you have a question, please type it in on the Q&amp;A function on your computer screen, and we'll monitor them. While we're waiting for some more questions to come in, we have one here for Dean Marina Holtz. Dean Holtz, the question says, "You talked about recruiting some new young faculty. I don't think I heard you mention what will be the focus for the academic disciplines of the recruits that you talked about. Can you expand on that, please?
Thank you, Dr. Halpern. That is a really good question. As you know, we are a fairly small institution, and we're very collaborative, and we cannot afford to recruit someone who has a very specialized interest in just one area. So what we're looking for are individuals who are collaborative, who can work across multiple areas, and who can also complement our teaching needs, both in the graduate school as well as in the School of Medicine, as Dean Nadler mentioned in his presentation. We're specifically looking for basic scientists who have interest in cellular biology as well as physiology, but those who can also work with our colleagues in the newly-integrated Department of Pathology, Microbiology, and Immunology or Pharmacology. And as you've seen with our previous search in the Department of, which is now Pathology, Microbiology, and Immunology, when we were looking for a virologist, that person also received a secondary appointment in the Department of Biochemistry and Molecular Biology because the interests spanned both departments. So that is our focus. Again, we don't know who we're going to get until we post the position, but we're looking for three individuals who can collaborate with themselves and also with us. And we're looking forward to welcoming these new colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Holtz. Our next question is for Dean Nadler. You talked about looking for a vice-chair position in this combined Department of Pathology, Microbiology, and Immunology. Can you share any details with us about what type of person you're looking for for this position?
Yes, thank you for the question. This is really an exciting opportunity. We've recently integrated pathology, microbiology, and immunology, and have an outstanding chair. However, we have now an opportunity to recruit a vice-chair of research, and we've assembled a wonderful search committee for bringing in somebody, and the goal is to bring in somebody, as Dr. Dean Holtz said, that can collaborate with our existing faculty, can also provide leadership and research for our graduate students, other faculty, work with other faculty, and also the students in the School of Medicine. But we're really looking for somebody with a national reputation, who at least will be at the associate professor level with a funded research program that's really innovative, that fits in very well with the existing expertise or amplifies the expertise in the existing Department of Microbiology, Immunology, and Pathology. There's wonderful opportunities there to interact with those faculty. And actually, there may even be an opportunity to form a new center of excellence, which would bring in faculty from multiple departments in a very heightened area of importance for the college. The position will be a basic scientist with a funded program, or it could be with a physician-scientist who has a major emphasis on research. In addition, as Dr. Holtz said, Dean Holtz said, "We don't forget about education, so this person will also enhance our educational opportunities for our students." But the major role of this particular position will be to lead a major research program and be transformative for the college. So we're very excited. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Dr. Nadler. Remember, if you have questions, type them in on the Q&amp;A function on your computer. It looked like someone started to type, but then stopped. But we do have a question here for Dr. Solomon Amar. The question is, multi-parts. Who would I contact if I want to give feedback about this laboratory renovation project? And to understand it better, will you be posting some sort of schematic or diagram which shows the plans for us to understand what's going on?
Thank you very much for the question. And in fact, we have just recently engaged into architectural drawing, and we will be making very soon, as soon as we incorporate, as we said, the feedback from the different stakeholders into making a 3D rendition of the laboratory changes as well as to BSB in laboratory spaces. So this will be done as soon as we finish with the architectural rendition and drawings. In regard to who to contact, you can contact my office, and I'd be more than happy to sit down with you in explaining the rationale and the directions that we have taken and we continue to take. Thank you very much for the question.
Thank you, Dr. Amar. We have a request for a little more information from Dean Ronnie Myers of the dental school. If he could come on now, please, Dean Myers. In essence, what the question is, is, "Why is New York the only state that requires this postgraduate training? Why hasn't it caught on elsewhere? And does this have any measurable impact on quality of dental care, this requirement, which seems to be unique to New York compared to, as you pointed out, the other 49 states?"
Thank you for the question, and it's a very good question, one in which the deans of the six academic dental centers in New York lobbied for very strongly back in the early 2000s to get the, along with the New York State Dental Association, to lobby for that change, which they got. There are some other states that do accept the residency as an alternative pathway to licensure if a person does the residency as opposed to a clinical exam. So there are several: Connecticut, California, Colorado. So others do. In New York, they only accept the PGY-1. So the question that you ask about quality of care, I don't believe there are any studies to suggest that one is better than the other. But I would state that the academic dental centers considered the one-shot clinical exam, which is actually a two-day exam, substituting PGY-1, which is an entire year of extra training, made the most sense for the academic dental centers and the New York State Dental Association to lobby for that. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Dean Myers. Remember, if you have a question for anyone who has spoken today or something else you'd like to talk about, type it in on your question and answer box on the bottom of the screen. We'll be happy to get to it. It looks like what we've got next looks like really more of a brief panel discussion. I need to ask Dr. Edward Farkas, Dr. Karen Murray, and Dr. Millay Tian to come on, please. Well, as best as I can summarize this, in view of studies which suggest that people quickly form opinions about other people based on how they look on Zoom, what is your opinion about having an interview process where the interviewer can't see the person being interviewed but can hear them for these case studies? This is a tough question, and suppose, let's take it in alphabetical order. Let Dr. Aken go first, Dr. Farkas second, and Dr. Murray third about your opinion about, what shall we call it, having a computer screen so you can't see the person you're interviewing and be influenced by how they might look?
Thank you for that rather intriguing question. Definitely, there has been some recommendations in general, not just in the field of medicine but in other fields, that both gender, sex, these things should be blinded when evaluating applicants. So there is some support for these types of ideas. I think it's a challenge to go through an interview process without seeing the actual person because one of the things, especially in our, you know, healthcare fields, we're trying to gauge the person's, you know, do they have a, you can kind of gauge their bedside manner, for example, from the interaction, their mannerisms, facial expressions, how they scrunch their eyes, and do all kinds of things with their hands. So removing that, I think, will put the admissions officers and admissions committees at a significant, I'd say somewhat of a disadvantage in not being able to select people based on those mannerisms. But at the same time, it does serve that purpose of somewhat blinding you so that you can remove some of the implicit biases that tend to come into selection processes when you see an applicant's, you know, gender, gender identities, sex, and all those types of other, race, all those types of other characteristics.
Yeah, I guess.
And thank you very much for that question.
It's, this is based by some research by some economists who studied whether or not the probability of a woman or minority getting a position in a symphony orchestra was affected by whether or not the audition was conducted behind a screen as opposed to whether the people listening to the audition could see the performer. But of course, with the point that Dr. Aken just made is, you may just want to hear how the trumpet or the trombone sounds, but if it's a clinician at the bedside, they're not going to be behind the screen. You're going to see them and want to interact with them. Dr. Farkas, what do you think about this issue?
I think I agree with Dr. Aken. At this point, we found that the ability for us to visualize what we need to through Zoom does work. What we look for is not only what they say, but we could still see if they're looking at the camera. We could still see if, you know, certain mannerisms as to, you know, fulfill what we're looking for in an applicant. One of the things that we look for is their burning desire to be dentists, and that, I think, comes through the screen just fine. And, you know, at the same time, we have their records in front of us. We're able to question them and find out if they actually did dissect frogs for a, you know, for a hands, you know, the ability to, you know, use their hands. And so overall, we are getting a picture that is very close to what we would do if it was in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Farkas. Dr. Murray, your opinion, please?
Thank you for the question, Dr. Halpern. I want to say I agree wholeheartedly with both Dr. Aken and Dr. Farkas. However, you know, for a medical school application, it's an all-encompass holistic application. And, you know, it's one of professionalism and demeanor. And being able to see the applicant and seeing how they conduct themselves on screen, I think is an important part of the interview process. So in terms of determining, you know, their bedside manner, you know, whether or not they seemed warm and genuine, those are attitudes that can only be assessed when you can see the applicant. For the medical school, our interview is a blind process. So really, when the applicant is sitting with their interviewer, they're really just being themselves. So the interviewer gets to learn a little bit about the applicant without the stress of talking about metrics or anything like that. So I really do believe for medical school application process, we do need to see the applicant because it does complete the entire picture. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Well, it looks like the last question's going to go, as the first one did, to Dr. Montcalvo. It's a variant of what we've been asked at some of the webinars, Marissa, "Do the development of mutations of the virus mean that I should change my opinion about whether I should get vaccinated or which type of vaccine I should have?" So can you talk about that, please? I'm sure this is on a lot of people's minds.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, there are several variants, not just one. And it is somewhat unclear as to what will be needed from the vaccines in relation to each of the variants. So, but I think at this point, I mean, in answer to the question, should I, like, hold off on vaccination until we know more? I would say no. I would say that if you can get vaccinated, if you can get vaccine, to please go ahead because I think that the scientific community will figure this out. We have to really be able to further study the transmission of each of these variants. We know that there are variants in Westchester County. And we really need to see what's going on with transmission. And if there needs to be a, some, a new development, either with a vaccine that is already out under emergency use authorization, like Pfizer or Moderna, or supplemental doses, you know, that will all come to fruition when needed. But I think we have to work from the knowledge base that exists right now, and that would be to proceed with vaccination and to continue with public health mitigation measures.
Thank you, Dr. Montcalvo. Please stay on. It looks like we've got one for you and for Vilma Bordinaro at Filma- If Vilma could come on, please. Uh, it looks like we have an alum who's tuned in. The alum wants to know. When you get vaccine on campus, will you need volunteers to help supervise? Uh, and if so, how do you sign up and how many volunteers will you need? So, uh, perhaps we, we could explain a little bit about the logistics about how this will be done if we get vaccine or when we get vaccine. And what the role might be for anyone who wants to volunteer. So maybe Marissa first and Vilma second, perhaps.
Okay, um, it is likely that we may need some assistance. There are many roles in a vaccination point of distribution, uh, besides vaccination. Uh, there is registration, there is monitoring in the discharge, in, uh, post vaccination, there is discharge. And very importantly, there are flow monitors to keep everything moving so that we can get the numbers through the way we want. And, uh, um, Vilma has really, uh, has this down to a science running the, um, the saliva. Sampling of, of, uh, that is done here. So we have a very good group of people who are versed in, in these, in some of, in some of these roles. But I'll turn to Vilma to say where she thinks there may be some specific opportunities.
Thank you, Dr. Montcalvo. So we will need, uh, several, uh, vaccinators. Who will, uh, be trained prior to vaccinating. There is a process. Dr. Montcalvo can elaborate on that. I will need volunteers to handle the registration and the discharge desks. And floaters to keep, uh, the flow of, uh, things moving throughout the day. Um, for those who are interested in volunteering, if they can drop me an email, I will add them to my list. And my email is vilma underscore Bordinaro at NYMC.edu. Thank you for your interest.
Uh, thank you. Uh, there are no further questions in the Q and A box. So if there are none, I want to thank everyone for tuning in today and joining us for the town hall meeting. We will have our next COVID nineteen webinar next week. For those who have been following with those, we'll be up to webinar number ten. We have the programs which Dr. Aken and Mr. Webb described for Black History Month coming up for the campus. Otherwise, everyone, thank you for joining us today. Have a good afternoon. Stay safe. Take good care of yourselves. And we'll keep the lines of communication open. Have a good day, everyone. Bye bye.